So I am calling the meeting of the Wallingford Planning Commission to order at 7:02 PM on the 13th of June. I have two commissioners that are absent. Lucy Thayer will not be able to attend and Jill Burkett will not be able to attend. Kevin, you want to introduce yourself?
Kevin Walling.
And I'm Tony Masick.
Since the board consists of five members and we have three, we do have a quorum. So are there any additions, subtractions from the agenda items?
Nope.
Okay. Then may I have a motion to accept?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Going to say, are we going to take turns tonight?
Pretty much.
Okay. I did not include the January minutes in the packet because we won't have, we wouldn't have a quorum for voting, so I would like to make a motion to table the January minutes again until we have such time as we have those members in.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. And the May minutes are attached to the agenda. Any such, and Kevin, I don't know why I didn't print out your attachment, I'm sorry, because I did attach it to the minutes on the commissioners' reports where you had the attach, I didn't, it didn't get printed out, I apologize.
It's okay.
Okay. So any additions?
I didn't find any.
Typos? I spelled everybody's name right, including my own.
Very strange.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Move accept the minutes as written from me.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
And we did take a vote on the agenda items, but I assume that's an aye vote. Okay, thank you. Zoning administrators' report, it's been relatively slow on permits. There is a, I issued a permit for a new house yesterday, so that's one new house that we have coming. And the DRB is meeting on the 29th to hear a application on a business law, sorry, business in an ag area. And that has to be a conditional use because it's not, the particular business isn't permitted. So that's scheduled so far, and that's really about it. So it's been fairly quiet. Okay. Commissioners' report, Kevin, do we have anything to add on pages one through 13?
I don't.
Okay. Tony, do you have anything or you want to wait until next month?
I'll wait until next month.
Okay, so.
So compile it a little better.
Can I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Lucy's not here, so I will motion to table her minutes if I can have a second.
So I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. All right. And what you have in front of you now are two separate files, but it is a continuation and yes, it's long. Of all of the definitions between Wallingford, Proctor, and West Rutland. And last, last time we met, we went through some of the Ms. through Zs. And you have a, you've got the complete set is what I'm going to try and say, okay? So as I said, I think if we take a look at the definitions that we have that correspond to what West Rutland has and what Proctor has, in some cases, all three of them are identical, in some cases they're not. But I'm looking primarily at West Rutland. For example, even the first one, accessory building, it's a little more detailed than ours when it says C-sections 1, 1016 and 1010, obviously that's for theirs. But I personally think it's a lot clearer than what we may have, although those two are identical. It was the next one down, I'm sorry, accessory dwelling. As you can see, theirs is a little bit longer and they also refer to the VSA section when you're talking about what that is. And I think that would be a good idea to basically substitute West Rutland's accessory dwelling unit for what we currently have.
Okay, just slide it over?
Just slide it over.
Okay.
I took a look at Proctor's and, I mean, we could even use Proctor's for that matter, but I preferred West Rutland's because it does refer right to the statutes and it just makes it easier. Accessory use, we're about the same on that one. Proctor has administrative officer and administrative FIA. Personally, I don't think we need that. So, and there, it's the only one, if you notice, Wallingford and West Rutland, they don't have it. That would be on page two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I would basically say, if we can, just ignore it.
So I'm just getting confused. My first page says 1 of 28 and the next thing I have in front of me is 1 of 23.
Ah, it's quite possible that you've, yes, okay. 23 is the second file. It may have, it might be out of order.
Okay, so what am I looking for?
You're looking at 2 of 28.
Okay, hang on.
Sorry.
And what's the heading?
Uh, well, if you look in the left, it says regulations, definitions, Wallingford.
No, no, for, uh.
Oh.
Administrative, that's what I was looking for.
Administrative officer is the top one.
Okay, yeah. And so it should be almost here. Artisan, nope.
No, that's it. Artisan craft studio.
Yeah, but that's, that's, I have that, but, okay, hang on. I remember where my fingers used to work. Animal housing.
No, so it's this page. And you've got it. So we're not going to address this in our definitions, parent, administrator.
Yeah, artisan craft housing, we put in there.
Craft studio.
Craft studio, sorry. I would say keep it in. Land use, as you can see, they're identical between us and West Rutland, so, you know. Although West Rutland's is a little tighter than ours, I think. They're virtually identical. The agriculture, agricultural structure, if you notice, West Rutland does refer to its sections, but it also refers to VSA, so I'd like to move, slide that over.
Sure.
Alteration is identical. I kind of question, to be honest with you, do we really need to have a definition of a pet store? I don't think we're ever going to have one.
Oh, hang on. Animal housing, pet store, oh, pet store, okay.
Yeah.
Well, animal housing facility, I could see that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know.
I mean, we can leave it in, it's not that problem, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that if somebody starts housing the animals, they're going to want to sell the feed.
Okay.
And that could be construed as a pet store.
West Rutland defines an apartment.
Mm-hmm.
It, I mean, we have multifamily, we have, you know, multifamily housing. Do we really need to define what an apartment is more than 30 days? And having said that, the state is wrestling with an awful lot of that. My suggestion is we don't worry about what an apartment is longer than 30 days as, you know, until the state decides.
Let them settle it.
Yeah. And then you can see, and my French is horrible, do we really need a definition? I've never, I've never used apartmentant or whatever.
Apartment?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Okay. An area special flood hazard, quite frankly, that's pretty well covered under our flood hazard, so I don't think we need it. Assisted living, both of them are the same nursing home and we have that. Do we need associations, lodges, and clubs? I think we all kind of know what an association lodge and a club is, don't we? Or do we need it?
I don't think we need it. I mean, it's, I don't think that the definition that's here is any, is going to matter to anyone as written, and I don't know that we have to define it anymore succinctly or anymore expansively or any.
Yeah, the only thing I'd say, if at some point some kind of advantage is given to association lodges and clubs, then that's the time we'll have to define what one of those is.
I would, quite frankly, I think everybody has an idea and, I mean, it's common use when we're talking about it. And attached, having a common wall, a roof, I think that's, that's Proctor. I don't think we really need to have that particular definition.
Okay.
Attic is the same in both, so I would say let's leave it, although I think most of us know what an attic is.
Mm-hmm.
Proctor, when it comes to auto service station with retail store and mini mart, I think their definition is, actually, I kind of like their definition a little bit better than ours, but ours incorporates truck repairs, so I don't know what you think about that.
Well.
Over 18,000.
Yeah.
Service station shall not include maintenance activities such as truck repair, regular painting, body or frame repairs.
Yeah. I think it pretty well covers it.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I would like to get rid of ours and take Proctor's.
All right.
Okay.
It's not like it was back in Mayberry.
No, that's for sure. Base flood is, again, I think that's a hazard thing and I don't really think we need it in our definitions.
Yeah.
That's more of a DRB situation.
1%, wow.
Yeah. Basement is defined in Rutland a little bit better than ours and it's, I think, a little more up to date. So, because it does include on all sides, whereas ours, well, ours.
What about basement, does that, doesn't matter?
No, not really.
Oh, okay, fine.
So we can keep ours, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Do we need to define what a bar or tavern is? Because quite frankly, that is a DRB issue, but it is directed from us and they have to go, anybody would have to have, if you want to operate a bar with an alcohol license, you have to go through the select board, you have to go through the state to get your license, and then you have to go to the DRB to operate. I mean, it doesn't matter, but.
I never see a problem with leaving that one.
Yeah, okay.
Because otherwise you're going to get a, somebody wrangling over, you know, we serve a lot of alcohol and beer here, but it's not our primary function.
Got it. Okay.
We're just here to have a good time.
I would like to keep our bed and breakfast, AKA Airbnb, short-term rental or similar use. I think a bed and breakfast definition right now is going to be too narrow.
You mean quotes after Airbnb, you have them at the beginning, but not after.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Do we need to change anything on the brewery? I mean, we've gone over a lot of these and.
No.
They're identical. Same thing with the building.
I don't think we need a building principal.
So just leave what we have and don't worry about principal building. Building area, it's always a good idea to take that. Boundary line adjustment, we're the only ones that define what a boundary line adjustment is, and believe me, we've had a few. I would really prefer to keep that in.
I would too.
Sure.
Okay. And vertical height, as you can see, Proctor's is, I think, a little bit, a little bit more extensive than the two that we have, and I kind of like the idea of having it pretty well defined because we've got people that sometimes want to know exactly when we're talking building heights. Does the cupola or does the wind vane or the chimney or whatever?
Well, I'm trying to see where that's different from ours right now, because ours does that excluding customary chimneys, antennas, church steeples, cupolas, and pre-zoning structure.
Yeah.
So.
But if you notice in Proctor, it says the vertical distance from the average finished grade surroundings of buildings to the highest point of the roof beams in the flat roof.
Yeah.
You know?
I'll take that.
Yeah. Business in West Rutland, they're the only ones that define business, although we have a business office. And looking at them, they're identical, so do we want to change business office or do we just want to leave, leave it as it is? It's almost a matter of semantics.
Yeah, I'd leave it alone myself.
Okay.
But Tony, what do you think?
That's fine. I would imagine the state has definition of a business.
Yeah, and this is pretty much it. Okay. A camp, if you notice, they're identical.
Mm-hmm.
So, and they do define though, in West Rutland, what a camp, a daytime, a camp Do we want to do anything? Do we want to include that or not?
Do we, let me, do we have?
No. You can see the only thing we have is, we don't have, we have no definition when it comes to an overnight camp or a day camp.
No, what I'm saying is, do we have any day camps or overnight camps run by the town?
We do, yeah. The town has the summer camp.
Lewis Morton has something.
Okay, then, then let's have it.
Okay, so we'll add that in. And then camper, as, as you can see in both cases, it just says, go see the trailers.
Mm-hmm.
And then campgrounds are a little more defined in the fact that campground, camping trailer park, West Rutland does mention tiny houses, and actually so do we, so, you know. And we don't have any problems with tiny houses yet, but I think that's great. I don't think they need to be changed. Cemetery, I don't see anything wrong with that.
No.
We don't have certificates of occupancy, so that definition on page nine, I don't think needs to be left in.
Okay.
Change of use is, I kind of like the idea of the fact that West Rutland did use an example, if you're going to demolish something, you need a permit because it is a change of use. We don't have any, and people sometimes ask, what is a change of use?
Well.
So I.
But just move that over.
Yeah. Thank you. Now this is where West Rutland does define club, and looking at what we had, and we've gotten rid of, and what they have, it might not be a bad idea to leave, and you can see that this does reference what statute we're talking about. So if you do get a organization in that claims it's a club, we would have a definition or someplace to go.
All right, we can just swing the whole thing over.
Yeah. And clinic health and therapy is, as I recall, is the same, so that doesn't matter. We have commercial in ours, we're the only one, and I kind of like the idea of leaving it there. Community center is identical. Conditional use, I would really prefer to slide over West Rutland's because it has the VSA defined already, ours doesn't. Condominium is the same. I don't really know if we need to have a contractor yard or not, or if we need a definition on what controlled substances are.
Well.
So.
I would say at Ames Tool, all that wood out there and all that, that's a contractor yard.
Yeah.
So.
But do we need to define it?
I don't think so.
And do we need to define controlled substance? I think that's pretty well normal. Most of us have an idea what it is if we grew up in the sixties. Cottage industry.
Yeah, we didn't have anything there.
No, we didn't.
Yeah.
And they are identical, so.
Just bring one over.
Okay. I think country inn, we talked about this when we were defining, do we really need to have a country inn because this is, I think this is going to fall under short-term rental, it's going to fall under anything else, so.
Okay.
You know, yeah. Coverage building is the same on both. We don't really refer to anything that's covered. I mean, coverage total would be the lot, how much can you cover? And I don't really find anything that says, really, you can only cover it at 50% or 90%. We don't have it.
We don't have it.
No, we don't.
I think West Rutland had something industrial, they said no more than 80%, but that was industrial.
Yeah.
But I don't know that we need.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
I don't think so either. And we can always add it in if we have to. One of the things I did notice, I didn't take it out, but if you notice under craft, artisan shop, we already have it defined on page two, and it didn't get moved. This says craft artisan, on page two it says artisan craft, so I would say we just get rid of it.
Okay.
There. Crawl space is identical.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Daycare centers are, they're pretty much the same all the way around on all the definitions, so might as well just leave what we already have.
I have a question on daycare facilities. Is there a state number, so to speak, like can you watch your neighbor's two kids and that's okay, but if there's four kids, it's not?
You have to be licensed.
Okay.
You can watch, I mean, if you're watching your neighbor's kids, that's fine, but if you're watching, and I don't know what the minimum number is, but if you're watching like six kids or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to have a, well, you're supposed to have a license.
Okay.
And you have to, and that's from the state as well as operating a business. And the daycare center, there's one in Hartsborough Road that the, she went to the DRB and she's got the health inspection, the fire marshal, she's good. This was several years ago. Development is, actually, we do have boundary, boundary line adjustments and things like this, so I'd like to keep that in.
Okay.
They're the same, development review board is the same. People ask what it is, it'd be nice to, you know, have this in here. District is the same. We don't have any colleges or anything. Do we really need to have dormitory rooms?
I don't think so.
We don't have a college. And drive-in up facilities, I think we talked about this, do we really need to have a definition? Because we don't really have any place where we could put one.
Well, the closest thing to a drive-up we have is the snack bar.
Yeah.
And.
It's not really a drive-up.
It's kind of, they got their own parking lot, they, you know, so.
Yeah. And quite frankly.
I don't think we need it. I mean, anyone who's, anyone who's trying to put something like that that would have a drive-up, you know, you would, you would know about it. I don't think that it matters zoning-wise, I think it would all be subsumed under the fact that someone's putting in a restaurant or business or something like that.
Well, and not only that, but I'm thinking, where would they put it?
Yeah.
You know, it'd have to be in the ag area somewhere, and then that would be a development. They could put it, well, they couldn't put it up where Kelly's is, and they couldn't put it up where Family Dollar is.
No.
If there's not enough room. So they'd have to demolish the Family Dollar building to put it up, so. And dump, do we need an area for dump or?
I think we do.
Okay.
Because it's got the word permitted.
Okay.
And somebody will say, hey, I allow people to dump here. Well, yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
And dwelling unit, as you can see, Rutland is ident, West Rutland and Wallingford are identical. Proctor isn't. Based on the fact that West Rutland went through the VCLT with this definition, I would say let's keep it. Do we need a definition on page 15 of what a dwelling is? Any building used by humans for habitation? I mean, that could be a shack.
I'm looking, hang on.
Yeah.
I have dwelling one family.
No, it's right at the top of that page.
Oh, 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 the only, yeah, no, I don't need that.
Now, if you notice under ours, I, we have dwelling one family, which is identical to West Rutland, and I moved this up in red because we also have family, single dwelling. Basically, because that is, you know, a lot of people ask, but if you look, and we did have family, single dwelling in there, but if you look, the one thing that I think is important is with the dwelling, the one family, is the fact that the state licensed or registered residential care home or group home, no more than six persons have a right and can be called a dwelling. But I think, and I haven't talked to any, any VCLT lawyer or anything, but the whole thing is, you know, what's a family? It goes right back to that definition we had before, so.
If, I say keep it in, but let's put the S on the word share.
Where are you?
Way down at the bottom. Free standing structure that shares no common wall with another residence.
Oh, sure. Okay. And the same thing with, you know, we have multiple housing and we have family multi, which as far as I'm concerned is, I mean, the definition is three or more families. Multifamily is dwelling or containing separate units, three or more families, they're all pretty much the same.
Mm-hmm.
But we, in the red where we have family multi, it's, hey, it's residential units within a single structure. The other two are defining somewhat what they are. Or, you know, do we want to be specific or do we want to keep it in general is what I'm saying. And I like. And I like our definition, by the way.
I do too.
So. Okay? And then dwelling two family, do we really, uh, we do define two-family dwellings within the regulations, one, two, and multi-families. Why it was split out like this, historically speaking, I can't, I can't tell you.
Or do you want to just dump it?
I don't think we can.
Okay.
They're all identical, so.
And it's, it's pretty simple.
Yeah. Okay. Easement, I'd like to keep.
Oh, yeah, I can't believe these other two don't have it.
Yeah. And enclosed storage, um, I'd like to keep. Environmental court, I've had people ask me what environmental court is, and I, I like the idea of being able to put it into the definitions with the referenced VSA.
Okay, just slide it over?
Okay. And then, now we have the family child, uh, childcare and the family childcare. I like proctors. It spells it out.
It certainly does.
And it also references it with the VSA, and to me, I think that's a lot better than just saying it's, hey, where the owner is operated and, you know, everything else. So if I can, I'd like to take proctors and slide that over.
Good.
Although if you notice, next one down, proctor defines family as two more persons living together as a single housekeeping unit. Do we need to define what family is? We went through this before. As you can see, West Rutland, you know.
Yeah. You could write a book if you wanted to.
Yeah, but I also have a problem in the fact it says no single housekeeping unit shall contain more than five members.
Yeah, because if you got more than that many kids, what happens?
That's the question.
You know?
Yeah. And quite frankly, looking through the statutes, um, I don't see any recognized definition of what a family is. So.
We'll leave that to the state to tell us.
Yes.
Yeah. So we, we're not going to define it, we'll just leave it. Okay? And offense, uh, I think are, they're identical. Okay? Flood hazard area, I don't think we really have to define that because it's pretty well-defined in the flood, uh, flood plan.
Yeah, and their definition is defining it by its title.
Yeah.
It's nothing.
Phil. I seem to recall that Jeff suggested this because otherwise, uh, Phil could be all sorts of things that you wouldn't want, so let's leave it. And then, as you notice, proctor then goes into all sorts of definitions going all the way down to, on their flood hazard, which, uh, we have in ours, and, I mean, there, it's easy enough to look it up, so I would recommend that we don't do that. But the flood area gross is a whole different story for us, um, because people ask, you know? The, um, the DRB is hearing right now a, um, an application to build in the flood zone, and, um, it's, it's in hearings right now, but, um, the person has gone to the flood hazard management people at the state. So there's, they're working with it. Okay? The floor area patron.
What is, what is the purpose of the floor area gross?
Um, well, as you can see.
I know, I can see what it is, but why would we care?
That's my question to you.
Does it have anything to do with getting insurance, or, but that would be up to insurance company.
Yeah, that's not our, it's not our dog.
And quite frankly, the next one down, floor area patron, is pretty much the same thing. So unless we absolutely need it, which I don't see why, uh, we can get rid of it. Frontline in the building, I think we definitely need that because I've had people come up and ask, what's the frontline? I don't think we need to worry about fuel short, uh, storage bulk and distribution because they'd need a permit to get it. We don't really need garden landscape center because, I mean, come on, that's a pretty common definition as far as I'm concerned. If you agree. Next one is gas station, and as you can see, proctor now defines what a gas station is where the other two say go to the auto service. The only difference that I could see on any of this is, um, proctor's, proctor says, hey, this is what a ga- gas station does, whereas the other one was just a, you know, like a Sitco. Quite frankly, they'd have to have a permit, it's not allowed anyway, so I don't really think we need to continue on with having another definition of what a gas station is. Do we need a definition of a golf course?
I'll tell you, I wouldn't be surprised if, um, Outer Creek Place doesn't put one in, they're putting everything else in.
Yeah, but they don't belong to us.
No, but if they expand north, which would be the easiest way to go.
Yeah.
They'll wind up there.
But we all know what a golf course is.
Okay.
That, I mean, that's, that's, you know, what I'm saying is, um, we can leave it in, that's not a problem, it's just, I'm just asking.
I'd say take it out, but I'm not a golf fan, if someone's a golf fan, then, so, so if you put in eight holes, it's, it's not a golf course, but you need nine holes, I mean, it's getting a little.
Well, that's how bowling came about.
Yeah.
Back during the early period, they used to play nine pins, and so they passed the law against it, so they just put another pin in front.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know.
We can leave it in, that's not a problem.
Sure.
Um, and grade finish, this is, this was one that, if I recall correctly, was suggested by Jeff, so I would say just leave it. A group home is definitely defined, and I think it really needs to stay that way.
Oh, yeah.
Guest room is, um, I think is going to come up with, uh, short-term rental, so I would basically just leave it in there.
Okay.
Highway, do we really, do we need a definition on what a highway is?
No, because we don't own a highway, the state does.
Right. And, um, same thing with historical site under West Rutland, I don't think we, you know. We have the historical villages, and they're already cited by the state of Vermont, so, unless True Temper wants to make one of their buildings a historical site, so. Historical structures are identical, by the way, so if we can leave that. Home occupation is, um, all definitions are pretty much the same.
Okay.
And the state is, the state has that definition, so I think it's pretty much the same. Hotel lodge, um, they're identical, except for the parentheses, and ours says hotel slash lodge, uh, West Rutland just says hotel, so. Indoor sports recreation facility are identical. We don't have, and, yeah, our definition of in, industry is, and everything, I'm sorry, I forgot to put that one up, um, they're identical.
Okay.
So.
So it's already there, we just don't see it?
It's on page 24.
Yep, I see.
Okay, we have industrial light or light manufacturing, or, um, West Rutland just has industrial, comma, light. Other than that, we're pretty much.
Yeah.
Identical. Yeah. Same thing with industrial park or industrial zone districts, they're identical. West Rutland identifies an inn. I would say, I wouldn't even bother with this because I think once Vermont, it defines what a short-term rental is, then it's going to be coming, and we can call an inn a hotel, pretty much the same, if we have to. Proctor defines junk and junk vehicle, okay? But we have norn- ordinance on junk vehicles already, so I don't think we have to define it.
Okay.
And I don't think we, um, I don't think we have to define junk because it's also in the ordinance. The junk yard definition is identical, um, with West Rutland and Wallingford, proctor's a little bit different, but, uh, they just stop a little bit before, um, you know, anything else. So unless you want to change it, we'll keep it.
Yeah.
Kinnels, as you can see, see animal housing facility on both of those. We've got land development, proctor had, proctor and ours say development, proctor says land development, but ident-, but if you go back to development, they're identical.
Yep. It's just where they stick it.
Yeah. And lawn sales, I don't really think we need to define lawn sales.
No.
We put in legislative body, and I kind of like the idea because people have asked, what's the legislative body of Wallingford? We can say that. And the same thing with the licensing authority.
Yep.
Proctor has line of the house, it's the line of the house facing the building, nearest to the lot line, and so on and so forth. We already have the front of the building, so that's, um, or we could just slide it over if you wish.
No, if you think it's redundant, I'll go with you.
I, I do, actually. Okay? And loading space are identical with both. On the next page, West Rutland has lodge, uh, rental housing and or, I, I, as I said, you know, we've already got it defined two different ways, unless you think it's important, and then we can slide it. Lot, as you can see, Wallingford and West Rutland is identical, proctor is a little bit different. But again, if I had a preference, I would ca-, I would keep ours because it is identical and because it has gone through the VCLT.
Mm-hmm.
And the same thing with lot area, lot corner, lot depth, lot frontage.
They were the same.
Yep, and lot line. So, and you can see, proctor also defines what a rear lot line and a side lot line is. We do the same thing, there's a picture in the definitions that didn't come through on this, and it, it shows exactly what it is.
I remember.
Yeah. So I would say we don't really need to add anything, and, um, the width, we already have in there, so we don't need it. The lowest floor is not a bad idea, strangely enough. Not necessarily, it's not necessary, um, I mean, it's a basement for the most part. And, um, the only thing I can figure is, in proctor, it may have something to do with their flood hazard.
It says here, usable solely for parking of vehicles.
Yeah.
Building access or storage.
Yeah.
It's, I don't think we're going to see any of that.
No. So we don't need it?
No.
Okay. Now, this is kind of interesting because we have manufactured mobile homes and manufactured mobile homes. In Wallingford and West Rutland, they're identical, but in proctor, for flood plain management purposes, the term also includes parked trailers, travel trailers, other similars, placed on a site for greater than 180 consecutive days. For insurance purposes, the term manufactured home does not include parked trailers, travel trailers, and others similar. I'm not quite sure what they're getting at there.
Yeah, I don't know what that means. I know what the first part means, and I know what the second part means.
Yeah.
But I don't know what they mean together.
Yeah. So I would basically just keep what we've got.
Yeah.
And perhaps with West Rutland, it also says C tiny homes, and I would add that onto ours to say C tiny homes. Manufacturing, uh, light is, um, West Rutland is a little bit more than ours, I think, in the sense of it says it does not regularly cause offensive odors, dust, smoke, or noise. We don't have it in ours, so I would think, if you will, that we would take West Rutland's over. Medical center is identical. I don't think we have to worry about getting a hospital in here.
I just planned one.
Main sea level, this is for flood hazard, and I don't really see why we have to worry about that. Mobile homes, as you can see, they, they've got a definition. Which we could take if we wanted, it does define, ours does not, where it says manufactured mobile home. I mean, we could go back to, uh, page one of 23, um, where we have manufactured mobile home and, um, basically define this or leave it as it is, it's, or ignore it, or whatever. As you can see, West Rutland didn't bother to put anything in it. But proctor's pretty definite, transportable in one or two sections, uh, at least eight feet long, 40 feet erected, has 320 square feet, if, if, I mean, this is coming right out of the statutes.
Yeah. We can always throw it in there just so somebody doesn't argue later.
Okay.
You know?
Sure. All right.
There's always, there's always that guy.
Mobile home parks, as you know, are pretty well-defined and discussed in the regs itself, so do we really need more, uh, as in proctor has it, or just what we've got?
No, I think what we got's okay. We can lean on the regs if it's outside that.
Yeah. And then modular panel, modular prefabbed house, that's really almost semantics, um, but I do like proctors, it's a little more up-to-date. If you don't mind, and then take, take their prefab house because that's really what they are, prefabs. Do we need to define motel building? I mean, it doesn't matter. Same thing with motor coach and motor vehicle. It's the same with West Rutland, and we already have it in there, so I would say just leave it. Motor sale, motor sales dealerships, um, truthfully speaking, I don't see where we would even have a room for a de-, for a dealership.
Well, the Shaw's sells some cars.
But Shaw's, I forgot.
Yeah, and so does, you know, the, down where Timberline Construction is, that used to be a used car lot.
All right. Totally forgot about that. Okay? Neighborhood commercial facilities, um, the same. Nightclub, lounge, bistro is, uh, the same. Non-commercial is the same. New construction, as you can see, proctor has this nice long, I'm sorry, when I'm thinking automobile dealerships, I'm thinking like new cars.
Yeah.
You know? Whatever. Okay, do we need, um, a definition on new, new construction? Because again, if you notice in proctor, it says for flood plain management purposes.
Yep.
Um, I don't think so. Um, non-conforming lots or parcels, we have, proctor calls it non-conformity. I wouldn't even bother with that and keep what we have.
Okay.
Uh, because they're pretty much identical. Non-conforming use is identical with West Rutland. Uh, dimensional non-conformity, I have no idea what that is. Um, non-conforming structure is, um, identical. Proctor does have the zoning, official zoning map, the one true copy of the town zoning map located in the office of the town clerk, and I think we have it too in, um, in one of our ordinances. So I don't think we really have to.
Okay.
Have it here, or we could, it doesn't really matter.
Well, I know we have it somewhere.
Yeah. Um, I didn't have time to look it up. Municipal park is the same in all three. Um, parking lots, do we need to have a definition on parking lots?
The only one I know that we really have is by the ball field.
Yeah. And that's owned by us, anyway, pretty much. Vtrans takes care of it and we do. Um, parking space, we're identical with West Rutland.
Mm-hmm.
Um, proctor requires a performance bond. I don't really see where that's required because that would be if they're going to do any, uh, work for the municipality, and I think that would be out of our jurisdiction.
Okay.
Permitted use is the same. Um, we, we have personal services. I would take Rutland's as examples.
Okay.
Because we're defining personal services using personal services in the definition.
Mm-hmm.
Um, PUDs, if you notice, um, they're pretty much identical, uh, language-wise. And I think, uh, I would just stay with it. Principal building, this is somewhat important when it comes to lots, people want to add a barn, an apartment, um, you know, a tiny house, um, an artisan studio or something, so it does help, and we've already got it anyway. Private club, do we need it?
I don't think so. I don't know, is this meant to be a, um, an ordinance, you know, and their guests in 596?
Oh, 596 is referring to the line number.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't erase that. I mean, I would, it doesn't really matter, we can leave it in.
Yeah.
But I'll take the 596 out.
I just did.
Okay, professional residences, they're pretty much the same. Um, water supply, public water, uh, public sewer, they're the same. Recreation, private, um, as you can see, proctor and West Rutland define it a little bit better than we do, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it does talk about golf, driving ranges, pitching ranges, putting courses, parks, beaches, tents, uh, everything, although I don't know, um, if we need all that, but it's up to you, too.
Well, which one did you go with? They're not quite identical.
Yeah. Um, I would go, I would tend to go to West Rutland since they just got their approval.
Okay, sure.
Um, I don't think we need residential apartments in here.
Okay.
Uh, recycling is, um, pretty much the same. We're, uh, lot line is, uh, the same. Religious institution is the same. Renewable energy sources are the same. Repair shop is the same. Residential care, um, again, I would go with, um, West Rutland. It's a little more defined than the other two because it's a newer, newer one, and it's been vetted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, residential use.
Well, it says, ours has licensed foster home, and theirs just has licensed home, which I wasn't sure why, what they were talking about, and then I looked at ours. So if we can just add foster into licensed foster home on the second line of theirs.
Sure. Got it.
That makes more sense to me.
Okay. And, um, we have residential use. They, uh, West Rutland has residential use, and it very specifically says not, uh, not associated with short-term or transit use of facilities such as a B and B and hotel. And I think that's a good definition.
Okay.
For people and to help understand. Okay, restaurant delicatessen, um, and under ours with the 634, it's also a line number.
Mm-hmm.
So it depends what y'all want. They're a little bit different, all of them.
Mm-hmm.
Got to take it out, 639, if you're with us.
Yeah. Yeah, I will.
I think we can leave ours alone.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, retail store is identical.
Okay.
And right away, um, this was, uh, recommended by Jeff, I think, uh, instead of the one in proctor, and I, I like this one a lot better.
Okay.
And that's it, because I believe road frontage, rooming, boarding house, salvage yard, I mean, we can continue through, but we went through most of this last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So I will make the changes.
Wow. It feels like we just raced through the dictionary.
I do have to say my eyes were getting a little crossed at the end of all of this.
Okay.
All righty, um, so that's that. Comments from the public? Do you all have any comments from the public?
Same guy.
Hmm?
Same guy.
Okay, so, um, our next meeting is scheduled for the 11th of July.
Okay, I will not be back.
Yeah, you're going to be in Uganda.
Oh, you should be around.
I'll be here. Okay, so if I can have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Kevin second.
Second motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.